And please let the record show that all commissioners are present. The first thing that we need to do tonight is to consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on June 21 of this year. Does anyone have any comments relative to that, those minutes? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for that. There's been a motion to approve the minutes for June 21. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Also, we need to get an approval on the minutes to the special joint workshop, excuse me, between the P&amp;Z and the council, which was held on June 30. Does anyone here have any comments on that? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll move to approve them.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Anyone wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission must have completed a speaker's request form, and I do have the ones up here that have filled that out. In accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the commission is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. All right? So, is this, is this all of them? Autumn?
While you were on visitor comments, right?
Yes.
Agenda item number four, we did not have any speakers for visitor comments.
We do not. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay. We're here tonight to conduct a public hearing and review and consider an application requesting enactment of a planned development overlay district for attached single-family residential townhome use relating to the development and use of a 4.3 acre tract of land located in the F-Hiatt survey abstract number 559, commonly known as 102 Barnett Boulevard. Ms. Ammon.
Chairman, Commissioners, Autumn Ammon, Community Development Coordinator. As we know, the townhomes were on the P&amp;Z agenda on June 21. The applicant is still requesting to change the current zoning on the property located at 102 Barnett Boulevard from SF 40 to a planned development overlay district for attached single-family townhouses consisting of 60 lots. At that meeting, any action on the request was tabled. Also, at the June meeting, the public hearing relating to the application was open, conducted, and closed. I did have to send out public hearing notices again to everyone within 200 foot for this meeting. As stated in my briefing that you had received on Friday, as of last Thursday, I had received an overall total of approximately 54 emails or correspondences, 18 in support, 36 opposed. I placed a copy of all those emails in your packets. I wanted to ensure that you received every email that I have. Okay? So, since then, since your packets went out, I have received an additional 25 emails or correspondences, and I had placed those on the dais for you tonight. Okay? There was eight in support, 17 opposed. So, tonight, from the briefing, under your identified needs, you'll need to conduct the public hearing tonight and consider and make a recommendation to the city council regarding the request to change the zoning on the property. So, with that being said, that is the end of my briefing tonight, and I would like to hand it over to our applicant, Mr. Dusty Broadway. Okay?
And sir, for the record, if you will, please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Dusty Broadway. My address is 1888 Sinclair Court in Lewisville, Texas. It's nice to be back to present Whitestone Village, a farcele townhome project located at 102 Barnett Boulevard. Tonight, I will share the floor plans, the site plan, and play an animation video of what this project would look like once completed. More importantly, I have two people who will present tonight. Steve Stoner is a professional traffic operations engineer. Steve will speak about the traffic, as that was a takeaway from the previous meeting. Ryan Collinsworth will share how this project will benefit the city of Highland Village. He will also talk about the Highland Village single-family and commercial markets and the housing predictions for the next three to five years in the DFW area. We walk through my background and experience at the June meeting, so I won't reiterate that tonight. However, I have over 25 years' experience in real estate and construction industry, and I have an MBA in corporate finance. There are two floor plans for this project. The rear entrance garage floor plan is three bedrooms. They're all upstairs. There's three full bathrooms and a half-bath, a powder room. It's 1,789 square feet. There are 38 of these on the site plan, which I refer to as being located in the middle or the center of the project. It has an outdoor front porch, a freestanding tub, his and her vanity, large walk-in closets, a laundry room, two-car garage, open living and dining rooms, full kitchen with an island and a pantry, 10-foot ceilings throughout, and pre-wire for car charging stations. The second floor plan is the front entrance garage floor plan. It has three bedrooms as well. They're all upstairs. It has two full bathrooms and a powder room. It is 2,205 square feet, and there are 22 of these located on the site plan, which are on the north and south property lines. It has an outdoor covered patio, and the rest of the features that you see listed are the same from the previous floor plan. Well, oh, there we go. On the two previous slides, I mentioned the location of each floor plan. The blue color is the front entrance garage plan, which is 2,205 square foot, and it's located along the north and the south property line. The orange, which is supposed to be orange, looks more brown, I guess. The orange is the rear entrance garage plan. It's 1,789 square feet, and it is located in the middle of the property. There are 60 townhomes, each individually addressed. 30 additional parking spaces are provided. There are two mailbox locations. There's a walking trail, which can provide an alternate route to and from Heritage Elementary School and Ramblin' Oaks Assisted Living Facility. There's a retaining wall with a six-foot fence on the west side of the project and about halfway down the north side. There are two entry exits for this project, and there are no windows on the second floor of any of the townhomes that are located on the west side of the project. Before I turn it over to Steve to talk about traffic, I'm going to play an animation video, and then Steve will come up and speak about traffic.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Steve Stoner. I am with the firm, I'm sorry, 7557, Rambler Road, Dallas, Texas, 75231. And I am a traffic engineer at Pacheco Coke, and I've been in the industry for 28 years, and I'm a certified traffic engineer specifically. So, that is my background. I have a master of science in engineering as well. Mr. Broadway, thought it would be very helpful if I came to talk about trip generation specifically because I believe he presented that information last time, and it sounded like there were some questions about it. So, I wanted to just take a little deeper dive into that and try to answer questions. The table you see to the left was prepared actually by another engineering firm, but it is a standard calculation that all traffic engineers would arrive at those same results. It is, what it is showing you is the number of trip ends, E-N-D-S. And what that means is the number of vehicle trips entering and exiting the site. When we do traffic studies, we concentrate our analysis on the peak hours. In the morning, usually, that peak hour is between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., when most people are going to work. In the afternoon, it's typically from between 4:30 and 6:30. There's a highest 60-minute period. So, those are what we're calling the peak hours of the adjacent street traffic. And what this table is showing you is how many trip ends this development would generate on average during those one-hour periods. It is not the entire volume during the AM or the PM. It's just the number of vehicle trip ends during those respective one-hours. And it, yeah, so I think, hopefully, that makes some sense, that it is based on national averages that were compiled by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. On the right-hand side of the slide, you see just a screenshot of the web app we used to get those calculations. A few years before that, it was in a big, thick manual, and they're on the 11th edition of that manual right now. So, whenever they get more data, they update those equations, and it's a function of the number of dwelling units. At the bottom left of the slide, you can see the, some other common land uses, some square feet of office and square feet of retail that would generate a comparable amount of traffic during the PM peak hour. So, that's just for your information. So, I'll be happy to dive into that a little, in a little more detail if that's helpful.
I do have one question.
Quick question? Go ahead. Go ahead. So, you're saying that, can you go back a slide?
I'm trying to, sorry. I'm not sure where to point it.
So, you're saying the 26 total cars going in at the AM peak hour is only for the 60 residents, the 60 townhomes?
That's correct.
So, you did not consider the hundreds of students and moms and dads that carpool to their kids to Heritage? Correct.
In a, in a traffic impact analysis, which we have not done one of those, you would do traffic counts of the existing road and add, you would analyze it before you add the proposed project's traffic and after, to see what the impact of the project is.
And did they, did y'all do that? No?
We were told not to. The city told us not to, and they were in control.
Okay. Thank you. Didn't know that.
But just to be clear, the 26 is a combination of in and out added together.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about your assumption on quantity. Looks like you're assuming one, let's say, full occupancy, one car per unit. That seems a little unrealistic to me, that you just have one car per unit. So, have you, have you run these numbers based on any other assumptions, such as 90 cars or 120 cars?
It's actually not based on the number of cars. It's based on the number of dwelling units. So, this is the, what the average has been from the data collected all around the country of the number of times a vehicle would enter and exit the site in a one-hour period. That, so, there would likely be several cars that are still parked on-site, some cars that are away from the site who've already left. Obviously, some people leave early, some people leave later. This is just a 60-minute period in the morning and a 60-minute period in the afternoon.
Okay. Well, if the quantity represents the number of townhomes, then what number do you use to run your numbers on in and out? You just assign one car per unit?
It's not based on the number of cars per unit. It's just the total number of units. So, those, those questions you're asking is kind of cooked into the formulas, and I don't have that information as to what the average is per unit, a number of vehicles per unit. So, this is just how many 60 townhomes would generate during those respective periods.
But there has to be some sort of assumption about number of vehicles, doesn't there, to get this specific?
So, let me just try to answer your question this way in terms of how ITE compiles the data that we, we traffic engineers use. So, you can imagine consultants such as my firm, if we do a trip generation study for a townhome site, we would set up traffic counters at all the driveways, and during the peak hour period in the morning and the peak hour period in the afternoon, we would count how many cars go in and out during that period. We would want to know how many dwelling units, how many townhomes are in that development. So, whether it's 100 or 200, we have the number of in and outs. So, we send that data to ITE. Other consultants do the exact same thing all around the country. They send their data to ITE. So, the only variable that applies here is the number of units, like dwelling units, and ITE just compiles it and averages all that data and gives us the equations we use to come up with those trip numbers.
Okay.
Does that help explain? It's not based on the number of vehicles.
No, but I'm a simpleton, and I'm not, I'm not following how you turn the quantity of units into a, estimate the cars, since you don't have, since it's not built for you to measure ingress and egress each day. It seems to me like there, you would want to at least do 1.5 cars per townhome or something along those lines to get a more accurate representation of the, what the peak hours might look at, but, you know.
Yeah. If it helps, so, you could do a similar study for an office building. For land uses like office, it's based on square feet. So, that's, that's where the best data is. That's the variable that we use for an office development. For residential, it happens to be the number of dwelling units.
Steve, I think the missing piece is this isn't specific to this site. They're just saying if there's 60 units somewhere nationally, the average is 26 based on 60 doors. So, it's not a, it's not a specific to these townhomes, I don't think, if I understand correctly.
Well, it would be any 60-unit townhome.
Yes, sorry, townhomes. It would be townhomes, but, yeah.
Yes.
But it's not, these numbers aren't specific to this site. It's just using an average based on the ITE.
It is the national average is a way to look at it, yes.
But let me ask a question right quick. As the proposal stands right now, Mr. Broadway has 142 parking spaces inside the parameter of the lot, let's call it, and he is asking for an additional eight parking spaces beyond the street, which is 150 parking spaces. So, it, I think I have to agree with what's being said here, is that basing that on 60 cars, when there is, the average for any townhome or apartment is two and a half cars per, okay?
Just one clarification. It's not based on 60 cars. It's based on 60 townhome units.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that, but it, I don't know, maybe I just don't understand it right, but it, with 150 parking spaces, and we're talking about 60 cars because we have 60 buildings.
So...
I'm sorry, I don't get that.
Okay. Well, just keep in mind that these numbers are in a one-hour period. So, some people leave earlier than that peak hour, some people leave later, some have totally, you know, some people are probably working from home these days, so this data isn't, you know, like up to the minute. It's based on several years in the past, but, but it is, it is a typical 60-unit townhome. I mean, any traffic engineer would come up with those same numbers, and it's the number of vehicles during just the one-hour period, when the traffic on the street is traditionally the highest.
Okay.
And it's reported off of real data, is what I heard you say, right?
That's correct.
Physically?
It's not an opinion, or I guess.
Right. You physically counted, somehow counted these, an average of 26 coming out of a 60-unit...
That is correct.
Yeah.
You know, we personally didn't, but...
Right, right, right. I know what you're saying. But that's a physical number that was counted, and that's how you got to those.
It is, it is the industry-standard way of calculating trip generation. That's correct.
Per hour, for that hour?
Yes.
Any further questions?
These next two slides is just some information that you may have already seen before. I did not compile it. It was prepared by the city staff, is my understanding, and it is just some traffic data for Justin Road, FM 407. There's no question, it's a high-volume road. I'm, I'm not going to try to tell you otherwise. But the, according to this data, a road of that size can carry 35,000 cars per day. Again, these are statist, you know, these are analytical numbers. The actual traffic count, 25,000. So, it's, it's approaching its theoretical capacity. Now, there are roads that exceed their theoretical capacity, but, so, but this certainly is a busy road. And this also gives some statistics about the eastbound, westbound. This is over a 24-hour period. It is my understanding that the city staff has asked TechDOT to do a traffic signal warrant analysis at the intersection of Barnett Boulevard, and I think one or two other intersections in the immediate vicinity. Personally, I think that's a very appropriate step. TechDOT is who would have to sign off on installing a traffic signal anyway, and they, my understanding is that that's, that study is scheduled to determine if either of those intersections that they're studying meets the warrants to install a traffic signal, which would significantly change the traffic patterns. It would create gaps on the traffic flow on 407 and so forth. Obviously, if it were at the Barnett Boulevard intersection, then all the turning maneuvers would be protected by the traffic signal. Not sure where to point it. Just one more slide. Okay. Again, this is information prepared by the city staff, the number of crashes recorded along FM, for a stretch of FM 407 for, since 2019 to present. Again, I did not collect this data, so, but it does give you, as you would expect, there are a lot more accidents at the high-volume intersections and relatively few in the, at the lower-volume streets. But, you know, traffic, the traffic signal warrant analysis will look at crashes. That's one of the warrants, potential warrants to install a traffic signal. So, I believe that is my last slide, and I will be happy to answer any additional questions, either now or at the appropriate time.
Thank you, sir.
Just a second, Mr. Stoner. So, did, did Pacheco Coke do a traffic study? Or were you just, you're just here to kind of explain the information that was here?
That's correct. We have not.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. Ryan Collinsworth, 3004 South Mortrell, Flowermount, Texas, 75022. So, a little bit about my background. 47 years here in this area, 19 years in real estate, done a little bit over 1,000 transactions in my career, mostly in Denton County. Graduated from UNT. I also hold a broker's real estate license, so constantly moving people in this area. I'm going to talk a little bit about what's going on with... I'm going to talk a little bit about what's going on with tax revenue, what this brings in, as well as just some of the stuff that's going on in the stats. So you can see with the tax rate for Highland Village is .56302, with an average sales price around $450, revenue for that each unit would be $2,533.59. It puts a total of 60 units at $152,000 in tax revenue per year. Obviously, that would go up whenever house pricings go up and/or values continue to This shows a median closed price for Highland Village over the past, since 2018. So you can see that the average price of homes in here, this goes by month, but you can see that the trend continues to go up. Right now, in July, it's $560,000 is the average price in Highland Village, or about 100 grand less than that. You'll see here in a minute what the actual square footage is, and you can see where the prices have gone up and come down, gone up and come down, but we're just continuing to see that price continue to go. So the historic price range, want to bring to the point what we're looking at, that 400-500 range. You can see over the past two years, that's been the sweet spot for Highland Village. That 400-500 has been 59 units sold in 2020, and in 2021, 78 units sold. This year is 20 units. So at that rate, we're actually pacing below that. But what has happened is now the average has gone up, 500-600,000 range, 600-700,000 range. Those have gone up respectively, even the 700-800,000 range has gone way up. So you can see over the years, the inventory is shrinking for Highland Village as far as the affordability factor. Eventually, this will turn to the next slide. There we go. So if you look at a three-bedroom, two-bath home in Highland Village, so this was compiled over a 90-day study, so this just looks at the past 90 days. You can see the average build is 1985 build, with the average price of 512,750. So if you look at a 1985 home versus what we're building for a 2022 home, the average person that's buying one of those homes has to spend another 40,000 to 60,000, even 100,000 to get it up to the energy efficiency that we're going to actually offer. So you look at it from that, it's an aging home market, so people are having to put some money into it to update some of the older homes. So you'll see that we're even coming in underneath that for the houses built well over 30-plus So, oops. So the housing market, that's been a big question. People will go, this is all going to crash, it's all going to crash. We don't have an economist yet that has talked about the housing market crashing for Texas. We do, however, do have economists saying this is going to probably be the next three to five years, one of the best years for Texas again. We're seeing house prices continue to increase. So what's driving that? It's a lack of inventory. National Builder will tell you the exact same thing, we just don't have the inventory to keep up with the demand. We have a record number of companies moving here. I just got through doing some reloks for Caterpillar. Well, those people are looking at Highland Village and Flower Mound. Those are the two locations they've been looking at and been targeting, reason being because their offices are in Irving, and they use DFW Airport to fly in and out of. So the last family I just moved here, they were looking for Highland Village, but they just wanted a little bit newer home. They ended up going to Flower Mound because they wanted something that was a little bit newer, a little bit bigger with a yard, and that didn't offer that here without going to new construction with a smaller yard. So they said, we just need to do something a little bit different. So the demand is still driving that. I would love to say that we're going to see prices decrease, mainly for my tax purposes reason, but that's just not going to be the case. And that's what they've been saying, not just me, that's what the economist has been saying over and over and over here in the DFW area. And then the commercial side of things. So it has been looked at, people asking about putting a commercial building there. Right now, Highland Village has 21 buildings that are up for lease. In those 21 buildings, 43 spaces are still currently trying to be leased out. There's one on Barnett, they have not had any activity to try to move somebody into that location. We talk amongst ourselves, we make phone calls to different brokers and stuff, saying, hey, do you have somebody for this and this and this? I've talked to Larry on this property at least three or four different times, and said, hey, y'all have anybody moving in that direction? He goes, nope, don't have anybody yet. I said, great. He goes, but I'd love to work with you. I said, well, I'd love to work with you too, but I just don't have anybody looking for this area. So that's been the biggest thing, is we have so much inventory currently on the market in Highland Village that's not being leased out. So I'll open up to questions if y'all have any questions for me, or we can wait until later on.
Questions?
Did they give any reasons why the space on Barnett isn't leasing?
The last tenant that was in there left, it was kind of like a, they were trying to use it as a doctor's office slash dentist's office kind of deal, and they just have not been able to get anybody that direction. With the developments going in Flower Mound on 2499, that's a huge medical facility over in that direction, so they do have a lot of street people that are going that direction. That's even with the developer that's actually doing a lot of those buildings over there saying the same thing. They've tried to build elsewhere and they're like, this is easy, people just keep renting out here, so that's what I've been told.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If we don't have any further questions, I would like to now open the hearing to the public comments. Please, the ones of you that are going to come up and speak, a green light will come on, you have three minutes. And when the red light comes on, you have to stop, okay? And I will call, I will call the names out as they were given to me, and we'll get this thing going. Elizabeth Stanci.
You must remember my name from the last time. Elizabeth Stanci, 931 Inverness, one of the adjacent property owners along the fence line. Real estate agent Kim from Dallas on her listing for this property indicates office/medical would be best and highest use, not 60 units that don't meet the current high-density code requirements for setback, green space, trees, among other things. We've been accused of being village people with our pitchforks out, rabidly defiant of this family's rights to sell their land and make a decent profit. In reality, we've lived here 15 years, and for that entire time, we've known this land was destined for commercial use, and we've never complained about that. But ask yourself how 60 units, 20 feet from your fence line, would sit with you? And precisely 0% of respondents to the Our Village survey think that this is an appropriate use of this space. We have an existing drainage issue. Every time we get a decent rain, our garage floods for several days. God willing, if it ever rains here again, do you suppose four acres of concrete and roofing with a concrete path along our back fence line will make that better or make that worse? Texas Water Code requires some kind of water detention to prevent increased flows onto downstream properties. This development has none. Will the city be helping us with the drainage crisis, or will that just become the burden of the adjacent residents? Green space, setbacks, and trees aren't just for aesthetics. In the developer's video, the concrete pathway along our fence line is quite wide open and lovely. In reality, that would be a five-feet concrete path with about seven feet on each side and a fence on each side of that. By comparison, on the western border of Briar Hill, the lit and irrigated Walmart pathway is about 50 feet at its narrowest. Hopefully, the developer would honor his verbal commitment to retain 100% of the trees and shrubs along the existing fence line, but I'd rather like to see that in writing. Regardless, he's proposing a 20-foot-wide, unlit, fenced-in alley. I don't want a drag alley on my back fence line, and you probably shouldn't want one anywhere in the city, particularly right next to an elementary school and adjacent to a proposed high-density housing development. Given that, we still don't have a traffic study that provides any valid data for Texas. Your constituents have told you that they don't want this development here, and you would be exacerbating an existing drainage issue and substantially lowering the existing high-density housing codes. I don't see how you have any reasonable option other than motion to deny. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Wistonat?
He did a little better this time. I'm Tim Wistonat. My address is 2300 Olympia, 1484, Flower Mound, Texas. And I spoke last time, and I won't repeat, but I mentioned the traffic and the congestion and the density. And I appreciate y'all listening to me and by your questions and your concerns that you expressed. I believe that you get it, that you understand the traffic study. Last time, you had some very good questions about what time of the year it was done. I don't think that that's been answered to us. And if I understood it right, the person who did the study wasn't here to present it, so they've hired somebody else to present the study that was done before. So the school is a big deal, and it looks like that the school should be in session when the study's done, and so that's an issue. But the thing was pointed out that this didn't meet the Highland Village standards last time, and that caused us to redo it, and that's why we're here again. And so we're here with this overlay. Reading about the overlay, it talks about bringing amenities, and I don't see any amenities to this project. I see a very lack of yards. Based on the Highland Village standard, you would have bigger yards. When the builder was asked last time if he could meet the Highland Village standard, he basically said he couldn't afford to do it and do this. So I have some real concerns about it. There's not even a place to have a barbecue grill, if I, you know, looking at the schematic. And if you live there and you've got a dog, you're going to tell your kid, take him out in the yard, and the kid's not going to want to walk to the back of the complex, he's going to let him go out in front, and that's a health issue in and of itself. But just the amount of density that they've packed in here is a real concern. The pathway is basically an unlit secluded area that you're creating. You want to create one of those next to an elementary school? I don't think so. The landowner has a right to sell her property and property rights, I understand that, but the adjacent property owners also have some rights. There's also stakeholders with the other members of the village, the LSD parents, the people that live, work, and shop and sit in traffic. The traffic engineer, I appreciate, and I see the lights red, I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bobby Bell.
Good evening, Bobby Bell, 905 Heather Glenn Court. The proposed concept plan does not meet the approved criteria. It's listed in Highland Village City Code and ordinances. So Ordinance D1 says, proposed plan is not consistent with future land objectives, and that's clearly documented in our vision, our village findings. Ordinance 2, D2, the proposed development is not compatible with the existing uses of planned and adjoining uses. Ordinance D3, the proposed development does not provide adequate public facilities, as just noted. Ordinance D4, the proposed development is not consistent with the proposed of the base zoning. The proposed plan includes 120-square-foot lots with more than 85% of the lot being covered and no usable open space. Comparing the Highland Village Town Homes Plan Development Regulations to the proposed development plan, many of the regulations have variant requests. The regulations for minimum right-of-way, minimum area, minimum width, minimum depth, minimum rear setbacks have tremendous reductions from anywhere from 40% to 55%. In some cases, like the street right-of-way setback, has been eliminated. I'm curious why we're even having this discussion for this proposal, because it doesn't meet any of the requirements that we need. The people of Highland Village have spoken, and they don't want this in our village. So we're asking you to deny this proposal because it doesn't fit our ordinances at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold. Cora Bell.
Good evening, Council, Cora Bell, 905 Heather Glenn Court, and yes, that was my husband. Council, you have just approved the minutes from the last meeting. Those minutes state, from Commissioner George, table the request until the applicant could acquire a proper traffic study. Has a traffic study conducted by a registered professional engineer using the Institute of Transportation Engineers and standard engineering practices in this region been prepared, signed, and sealed? If not, why are we even here tonight? Also, in those approved minutes that you just approved, Commissioner George stated, the proposal, go through the review where it does and does not meet the city minimums. Has the developer presented this? The Highland Village approved comprehensive plan states that it shall be the guide for development for Highland Village. It is the city manager's duty to ensure compliance and consistency with that comprehensive plan. Has the city manager submitted a report for this proposal's compliance and consistency with the current and governing comprehensive plan? If not, why are we here tonight? You've just approved those minutes. Our village, our vision findings showed that the community is in strong opposition to town homes. 100%, yes, 100% of residents did not, did not, did not want any residential component on the properties along Barnett Road, 100%. Please listen to who you represent. Cheers.
Thank you. Keith Palmical.
Good evening, my name is Keith Palmical, 3001 South Street, Dallas, Texas, 75219. And I just want to rise and say it's a great privilege to work with the Wallises. For generations, their family has been a good steward of this land on Barnett Boulevard. And as you may recall from the last meeting, for Highland Village as well, whenever the Barnett family sold 1.755 acres for $1 so that Heritage Elementary could be built down the street, they've been great stewards of the land, and I would appreciate it if you would refer favorably to this project. It's a project that will help taxpayers all over Highland Village by adding a tax space to an area that does not have much developable land left. In the future, when the city needs more services like fire and police, having this expanded tax space will help meet that goal. And I would like to say too, that whenever we do look into traffic and such, I don't believe that the commissioners have addressed yet that if the neighbors would like to, there is the rear entrance at McMurray Trail. Perhaps the community can get together to solve any possible traffic problems by just opening up that gate with proper safety concerns, of course, and helping out with the traffic around the other side of the school. There are many, in other words, there are many options for a win-win situation. It doesn't really necessarily have to be one way or another. There's options for a win-win. And I respectfully request that you move this to council for further. And I respectfully request that you move this to council for further consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Oldham?
Patricia Oldham, 3405 Sherwood Lane, Highland Village. My husband and I have lived in the area for 20 years, 10 in Flower Mound and the last 10 in Highland Village. And we moved from Dallas to this community because it was low density and it was a nice suburb. And we wanted to get out of high-density, high-traffic Dallas. My feeling is putting a multifamily housing unit, which is, to me, glorified apartments at the square footage amount this is, isn't something that on four acres, a good option for this particular street. Especially with the school at the end. I don't have children, but my mother did live at Rambling Oaks for four years and my mother-in-law lived at Rambling Oaks for two years. So I've been in and out down Barnett Boulevard hundreds and hundreds of times after work and on the weekends. And it's a nightmare getting back out on 407. 407 with just four lanes, can't handle the amount of traffic now, let alone maybe another 120 cars going in and out at rush hour. I retired this year, thankfully. Recently, in the spring, I was shopping down 407 and stopped off at Painted Tree, came out about 3:00 in the afternoon. It took me 30 minutes to go down 407, turn right on Marketplace Boulevard, and then ride again on 2499 to go north to my home. 30 minutes, when it should take maybe 10 minutes to do that. The traffic was just— there was no accident. It was just high-density traffic with people, you know, going home from school and there are other errands that they're doing in the afternoon. So, street parking on this particular street is going to be a nightmare. I often had this park on the street to see my mom after work and on weekends because of all the other folks that were parking in the Rambling Oaks parking lot. I just don't think that this is a very good option for this particular street being that high density. And I would like for you to not approve a 60-unit zero-lot line complex on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Tuntler?
Cindy Tuntler. I live at 927 Heather Glenn Court. I am here once again to let you know that the main thing that you're forgetting is the kids and issues with kids. Children playing on the school grounds. This complex does not have any open space. Where do you think the kids are going to go? They're going to be on the school grounds. And when one of them gets hit by a car that's either coming into a dead-ended school area and turning around, then everyone's going to be up in arms. I think the safety of these kids is the first and foremost thing that you should be considering. I don't believe we need 100 and whatever, $50,000 in tax revenue in Highland Village. Seems that we've got plenty and, you know, when people step up when it's needed. This whole development is like trying to change the look and feel of Highland Village. Bottom line, the end. It's wanting to blow out probably more than a dozen city codes that are in existence today. I don't understand why that's acceptable. I really don't. And I think, again, a sidewalk with an unlighted pathway for kids—that's going to be teenagers hanging out behind my house, my property, and getting into nothing but trouble because they're not going to have anywhere to go because they're going to be too cool to go to the school playground. I just think that this is not needed. We've been a single-family home community forever and we need to stay that way. And the difference between $500,000 house and a $450,000 townhome is $50,000 in money. However, I'm in the mortgage industry. Right now, there are people reducing their property ask, the sellers are. They're coming back with paying title fees, which they never did before. So I think some of this information is a bit misleading and I, for one, would like you to say no and vote this down because it's—we don't need it. You've got so many bullet points of why not that I will say, "Thank you and I'm done."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jimmy Bassinger?
I'm Jimmy Bassinger. I live at 210 Edgewood. I would like to speak to you today. First, I thank you for working on the PNZ. It's a needed responsibility that y'all have voluntarily taken on and y'all are put in tough circumstances sometimes. I hope that you feel the heat from this one. We've lived in Highland Village since 1979. I think that's 43 years. We've seen the city develop very rationally and steadily over those 43 years as a single-family home subdivision—or city. And so I would like for that to continue. So I am against this development on Barnett. As been pointed out, it doesn't coincide with many of the city ordinances that are in place. It does not align with the present zoning. That's the reason they're asking for this PD overlay because they can't even meet the regular plan development ordinances. It's just too dense of deal. I spent 31 years as a firefighter in the city of Irving. The last 14 years as a battalion chief. I would hate to fight a fire in a development this close. There's no place to park a fire truck. There's no access for the individual firefighters to gain egress into a home. It's just so tight. The access road here is mainly just a little bit wider than an alley, 24 feet. And there's no setback from that 24 feet. So if you have a little front bumper overhang on a fire truck, it's going to take out a wall when it comes around the corner and has to avoid some other obstacle like a parked police car that are always there right before the fire truck gets there. So once a fire truck enters a place, well, they've got to have access to get out so they can get water. The first engine may come in and lay a line, but more than likely, they're going to try to attack a fire with the water that they have on their truck. And they depend on someone else to bring them water. So the second engine in would hook a line, enter the complex down this 24-foot that already has a police car and a fire truck there with firemen dragging lines around. And so you just—it gets very congested very quickly. I've not seen anything in the presented materials that talk about sprinkler systems. I don't know if they're required for a complex this dense or not, but that would be a go or no-go for me at all. You know, without a sprinkler system, if you're going to have any fire in any one of these units, it's going to burn the whole place down. Also, all the bedrooms are on the second floor. But thank you very much. The kitchen's on the first floor and the smoke rises. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, please. Jean Bassinger?
I'm Jean Bassinger. I live at 210 Edgewood in Highland Village. I'm married to the fireman. And so I just want to reiterate real, real quickly. Our vision, our village, our vision doesn't match it. Our citizens, we spent a ton of money to find out what our citizens want from us in this community and it is definitely not these townhomes on Barnett. So I would hope you would honor that, the citizens that you represent. Minimum standards? Why do we have them? If minimum means minimum, then this ought to be the minimum. And the developer was asked, "Can you match the minimum?" And he said basically, "No. I've already taken off five apartments—or, excuse me, townhomes and that's all I can do and make money." Highland Village is not in the business of making money for developers. We are in the business of having a city that meets the needs and the desires of our citizens who pay taxes. So that— also, I would like to talk about—ask the question on the detention. It was already mentioned that it's required that if you build and cover up dirt, you've got to have some means of dealing with that water runoff. And we all know that that goes downhill and that goes straight into that school. And I would question, has anybody here talked to the ISD to see what kind of a relationship and how that issue is going to be solved? Are we just going to build this development and then the city and the school—I mean, the school district, i.e. with taxpayers, are going to deal with the flooding of the school? So that's a question that hasn't been answered. I will also say that almost every question that was brought up in the last meeting, PNZ meeting, has not been answered. I don't hear anything new today that addressed those questions that were brought last meeting. Finally, I want to speak as a woman. Women buy houses. And I'm going to tell you as a woman that aesthetics is huge. This development has no aesthetics. It is on a dead-end street that goes into an elementary school in which other—hundreds of carpoolers or mothers bring their kids up and down that thing, along with the school buses. I worked over there at the poles at that school. The school buses come in there, come and go two times a day. So—and they back up that street waiting for those kids to get out of those schools, that school. So it has that. It is the—then on top of that, the street situation's going to be worse because there's going to be parking on the street. So that's going to narrow that down with the school buses and the mothers and fathers going up and down the street. There is—basically, the access to this apartment is basically an alley. If you look at the drawings and the renderings of that, it's just an alley. No aesthetics whatsoever. For the price, I would go somewhere else that does have it. And there's nothing aesthetic in any surrounding areas. And finally, Flower Mound has the property cross from 407 that they intend to develop. They've already threatened to do a warehouse. So talk about aesthetics. If they go through with it, no buy.
Please.
Thank you.
Thanks. Kristi Henderson put in a—well, you're going to speak.
Yeah, it's checked on there, I think.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Hi, I'm Kristi Henderson. My address is 937 Silverthorn Trail in Highland Village. I live in the Briar Hills subdivision. Traffic on 407 is a problem, as everybody's already said. I attended a meeting in Flower Mound where they said that their estimation was 35,000, not 25,000 currently. And if you drive that during rush hour, you would probably agree. The Barnett Boulevard is impossible to turn left. They talked about that in June. So instead of turning left when they exit, they turn right and do a U-turn at Tartan, which causes a ton of potential for accidents. And that's how I try to leave and go out. I can only turn right. I can't ever turn left there because it's a nightmare. So I would like a no-U-turn sign there, actually. If we can't get a light, at least we maybe can get a no-U-turn sign so that that will prevent some accidents. I think someone might have touched on the right-of-way, that there's no public right-of-way. These are fee simple resident lots in adjacent communities to Highland Village. The fee simple townhome lots require a front of a public street, like Flower Mound Riverwalk is an example. What's being proposed does not meet the minimum standards of our local communities. There's only a fire lane that's 24 feet wide. You have fire trucks that are going to go up and down to Rambling Oaks. You have ambulances and you have buses. Sounds like a nightmare to me. The city ordinance requires single-family lots to provide a public dedicated street. The code also specifies no public street of right-of-way can be less than 40 feet, even with a PD or a PD overlay. No lot in the development fronts a public street with a right-of-way with a minimum of 40 width. So as everybody else has said, we want to keep Highland Village single-family home community. I'm opposed to this development with its location. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Hutton?
I'm Sherry Hutton. I live at 923 Heather Glenn Court. Basically, most everybody has said pretty much what we all feel. We have 22 pages. 22 pages that show what they don't meet our codes. 22 pages. Why are we up here presenting this to you when we've elected you? You know, we elect you guys to represent us. These are the things that you're supposed to do. Why are we up here telling you why it doesn't meet code, why it shouldn't be built, why we don't want it, that the city doesn't want it, that you failed this many to give us this, you know? What do we want? And then, this is what we get. That's not what anybody wanted. But 22 pages. Why, again, are we up here? Why aren't you—you guys explaining to us why it doesn't fit, why it doesn't work? Or if you think it would be beneficial? How do you justify breaking all these codes when the only thing they meet is the maximum height? Which, when I asked him—and I live right behind it—he told me I would barely see a roof line. I'm like, "It's 35 feet tall. How am I going to see just a roof line?" And he goes, "Well, we're going to dig it down five feet." The other question I have is the firefighting is the main thing for me because that's all brush. They want to put that alley. Then they want to put a fence. Then there's supposedly seven feet between that and my fence. What's going to grow there? Brush. What's going on? We're in a drought. What's going to happen when that gets on fire? Because it's going to be between a wood fence and a wood fence. And how are the—how are the fire trucks going to get to that? Because the homes block behind that, so they can't get to that alley. So how are they going to fight it from my cul-de-sac? Going all the way through my backyard? Or—and then how are they going to get to the other thing? And who's going to—who's going to do all that brush? Who's going to take care of that? So it's just a hazard. So there, that part where they haven't even thought—but I just—22 pages where they don't meet our codes. So we don't want it. That's it. Thank you.
Scott McGahy?
Good evening, folks. My name's Scott McGahy. I live at 2165 Tartan Trail, just at the bottom. We walk our kids every morning to Heritage Elementary. I appreciate what y'all have done for Highland Village through the years. We moved in in 2013. Been a phenomenal place to live. It really has been. One of the reasons we moved here, single-family homes, yard, and the aesthetics that come with living in Highland Village. There's a lot that comes with this. I appreciate what y'all are trying to do, but if I have $450,000 to spend, I'm not spending it in Highland Village on a townhome. I'm just not going to do it. I'm going to take it where I know I can actually get more value for my dollar. These folks, they're going to be compressed. I don't even know if the townhomes that are adjacent are just past Whataburger. I don't even think they're full. I can't imagine all these being full, not at $450,000 per unit. I don't see it happening. If anything, it's going to end up being bought out. They're going to end up being used for apartments. They're going to lease them out. That's what's going to happen. Then you're going to have people that are coming in, doing a one-year lease, and they're popping out. The only way it would be viable is they're actually coming in, waiting for a house to be built, which is probably going to be down towards Lantana area. So we're going to constantly have a flux of people coming through there. But I do not see anybody spending that kind of money to be able to come live, just to live in Highland Village and then be basically trapped in that small area. I'm an emergency manager. I look at this very similar to how the battalion chief is looking at this. You're cramming way too much in a small area. I have to look at evacuations all the time. I do evacuation planning for hurricanes. We're in a scenario right now where I think if a sprinkler system were in there, that'd be great. But you've got a lot of folks that are mixed in really tight. You have real tight ingress egress and then you've only got one way out, coming out Barnett Lane. So I'm looking at this as an—if I had to come in and buy a house, I would want to come to Highland Village. I'd rather spend a little extra money for an older home that provides a lot more than 2,200 square feet and three bedrooms. That's all I got to say. I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Judy Poladnik?
Judy Poladnik, 933 Silverthorn Trail.
Judy Poladnik, 933 Silverthorn Trail in Highland Village. I'm a resident and have been in Highland Village since the late 1970s, early 80s. I've lived here in Highland Village, and I've seen so much development that's gone on, mostly for the good. I just have a couple of points to make. Everybody's pretty much covered everything I was going to say. I was involved with the cotton pack, cottonwood development. That was 35,000 cars a day, is what they told us on 407. I heard today it's 25,000. I don't think we lost 10,000 cars since May. Just want to make that point. The other thing I want to say is, living in Briar Hill like I do, we have three exit points out of Briar Hill. We have Tartan Trail, that's a great one. Insert sarcasm. We have 2499 and 407. If 407 is on, then it's impossible to turn left any time of the day unless you can hit it just perfect between the two lights that are not timed properly. We deal with everybody that's headed to the east on 407, making a U-turn at Tartan Trail to go back to the Walmart. And now we're going to have more traffic coming from the west, making a U-turn to go back to the east. It's, it's going to be a nightmare. It's already a nightmare. You can't get across 2499. Just try and pull out of one of those places with all the shrubbery that looks really nice on the road, but is bad. Or you have Briar Hill Boulevard where you have two schools, two school zones, and it's impossible, especially if the buses are being let out. This, the second thing, really the last things I want to make a point of, you talked about apartment, or townhomes coming, and I believe Highland Village townhomes were already tried in Highland Village at the district, correct? Which is now the Bowery. They put townhomes in there, and they didn't sell. And then they came to the city and said, we want to make these apartments. When I moved here, Highland Village said they'd never have apartments. Well, that was a long time ago, and that's obviously changed. We have apartments. This is what I see in this development being. If they don't sell those townhomes at 450,000, who's going to, what are they going to do? They're going to turn it into apartments, and we're going to have more apartments. I was a real estate agent here for 20 years. You're not going to buy no land in Highland Village for $450,000 and get an apartment. They're not going to sell. So I hope you vote no on this. I think the citizens have shown a great amount of information for y'all to provide you to make a very educated decision, and I hope you do vote this down. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Parker.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. I'm Kim Parker at 13355 Noel Road in Dallas. And I am the commercial broker that is listing this site. I was mentioned earlier by one of the neighbors. I'm flattered that I was actually mentioned, and I can absolutely address that point. But one thing I want to say is that this developer is not asking for 60 townhomes. They're not asking for no sprinklers. They haven't gone through that process yet. They're asking for a change in use to townhomes, and that process must still be approved by city council and staff. So this, this hearing is about a change in use to townhomes. Now, when we started working with the Wallises in 2019, we marketed aggressively to medical and office developers because at that time, we did believe that that was the best use. And even before COVID, what we found is that developers, they wanted to, if they were going to build medical or office buildings, they were going to use land that was already zoned for it because they can get into their business, they can get their business set up much faster than having to go through a zone change. That was a fact. Secondly, COVID happened, and then we saw an increase in vacancies of commercial space all over DFW. So building brand-new medical or any office space really came to a halt. And over time, the residential uses knocked on our door time and time again and showed us that the market, which does evolve, it's different than when the district first went in, which is now the Bowery. At the time, I believe they thought townhomes would be viable. This is 15 years later. Those are just important points, and therefore I respectfully request that you pass this on to city council for vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, chairman. Thank you for being here this evening. Bob Wallace, 102 Barnett Boulevard. At the June 21st meeting, I spoke about the history of the property and my family's generosity to the community. Today, I'm speaking out of regret. I regret back in the late 80s, my family donated the land that now leads to Heritage Elementary because this would be a non-issue. I regret that we didn't complain about the privacy and intrusion that 444 homes from Briar Hill 1, 2, and 3 brought to our backyard, not to mention the traffic and congestion. While we're addressing traffic, let's address how traffic will supposedly impact the safety of children playing on the playground. It won't. The playground's location and layout aren't changing. Consider what this area was like before 444 homes were built. I've lived on the property for 37 years. Before that, I spent 18 summers visiting my grandparents. I remember wildlife. I remember both space and the silence. Reference made in the last meeting implies that our property is a shared green space and an open area for children to play. It's not. It's private property. We've paid the taxes to prove it. Less than 2% of the community voted during the open house that was held back in February. Between the all-day open house, community coffee, and the online engagement opportunity, there were over 300 responses. Again, less than 2% of the community. Our property fell in Opportunity Area 3, which generated 139 votes. The votes were for office space, restaurants, retail, mixed use, and entertainment. Let's compare that to the shops in Highland Village and the surrounding area. What do you see? Retail, office, restaurants, and entertainment. What's the biggest complaint? Traffic. Townhomes won't impact traffic on Barnett like the aforementioned usages. And if you've lived here long enough, you may have been one of the many who opposed the plan to allow restaurant on the southwest side of the Barnett subdivision, which was then moved to the southeast side of the subdivision, now known as Water Burger. The complaint from our neighbors to the west then was noise, smells from food, and traffic. We've been down that road before. 98% of the city is built out, based on what we heard during the city council budgetary meeting. Highland Village needs more tax revenues to maintain its excellence and future growth. The development of Whitestone Village will bring many benefits to the community, not, as some rudely suggested last time, merely makeup on an ugly woman's face. It means safer access to Heritage Elementary School with proposed sidewalks, walking trails, and almost 10 times more tax revenues for the city. You can never have too many taxpayers, am I right? Although change isn't always popular, we feel that this development is necessary for the continued growth of Highland Village. We request that this plan and zoning commission approve this application and forward your recommendation to city council. And by the way, this morning, I did not observe one kid walked down Barnett Boulevard to school, but it did beat three of Highland Village's best. Back to blue. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers that we have that wanted to come up and speak. I do have five additionals that want their like or dislike known. Sungal Chow, he is opposed. Tamara Thigpen is opposed. Ruth Austin is opposed. Julie Thernot is opposed. Molly McGee is opposed. And Erin Just is opposed. That's all of the speakers that we have that signed up tonight to speak. Now, commissioners, do, does anybody have any questions for anyone out there? Mr. Chairman, are you going to close the public hearing? I'm sorry? Are you going to close the public hearing? Close the public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Public hearing is closed. So I had a question. It was Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Right? Are you still currently own the property?
Yes.
Anyone else? Any questions? I would ask the question, has the city reviewed whether the overlay fits use if the zoning has changed? And that's maybe, again, not the right way to ask the question, I know.
Yeah, that's, that's a very broad and, and general question. The, the general answer is, is the overlay, is an overlay planned district appropriate based on the application? The answer is yes. Whether or not the standards that are being requested as far as the regulations go by the applicant, that's really a matter for the commission and the council ultimately to decide if, if it's something that you believe is appropriate, recognizing the changes in relation to an SF40 zoning district, or even if this were a standalone district. So that's really kind of a matter for y'all to decide. I mean, I think some of the materials you've been provided, you know, laid out the differences in, for example, the standalone townhome district, minimum standards versus the overlay district, which is more open to making changes to those standards. So circling back to the original, part of the answer is, overlay district appropriate? Yes. Based on the way our zoning ordinance is written, it is. Is it, and when I say appropriate, is it an appropriate mechanism? Yes. Is it, you know, but the standards to be adopted, that's really, you know, what y'all are here to decide.
And when you say it's an appropriate mechanism, the overlay district is an appropriate mechanism for this, can you explain that?
Yeah, let me, let me explain. And, because what's a little weird about the zoning, the Highland Village zoning ordinance versus the way zoning ordinance is written in most other cities? They usually, the overlay district is more traditionally treated, much like what I think sometimes is called the look and feel district here, overlay district in Highland Village, which covers much of the west side of, of the city, which really does have an overlay, which really, it overlays certain regulations for certain types of uses, or even for all types of uses, for a certain area of town that overlays the base zoning district. The standalone district, the way the ordinance, zoning ordinance is written for Highland Village, is as if it's a fully self-contained, these are the only uses type of district, as opposed to an overlay which would incorporate the base zoning plus additional uses and maybe standards for those particular uses. It's a little, it's a little bit nuanced, but, but I think the other kind of district that we advertised originally, I think it was appropriately pointed out, which is why we're going through this procedural process of doing the public hearing again and treating as, pretty much as if this were a new application, because we, frankly, we just treated it wrong originally as a staff. And so I, and I'll take part of that blame on that as well. But we, I best say, but the other, because the other kind of district is a really self, is designed and written in the ordinance to be kind of a self-contained district. This is not. This is, this is literally overlaying a set of regulations with the adoption of, for townhome use for this particular property. That's, that's kind of how, that's kind of the difference. I know it's, and I don't know how, I don't know how to more simply explain it than that. I wish I could.
All right. Thank you.
I do have a question probably for our city manager. The, I do remember last time, we said we would table things for a traffic report, and the one we got seems like it's just a repetition of what we already had. So do we have one? Is it in the works? So are we not going to do one?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Scott Christin, Director of Pilot Works. The city has made the request to text doc to perform a signal warrant study at the intersection of 407 and Barnett. We have not received the results.
So we've requested it. We know that it, it could just take a long time, or we don't know?
They said it could take up to eight weeks.
Oh, okay. Do you know, do you remember how long ago? Was it just like a month ago that we asked?
Right after the last meeting.
Okay.
The last planning and zoning meeting.
Okay.
The next day.
And Scott, what would that study actually show us?
It'll show whether or not the intersection of Barnett and Farnham Market 407 warrants a signalized intersection.
And that'd be based on volume that goes through there?
It's based on seven warrants.
I mean, we have been asking for a light there for years, and text doc keeps telling us no.
I mean, it's, it's important information to have when we're making, you know, a decision like this of how to proceed, so that's.
Besides that being important, I really do feel it's important that even this being an overlay, almost like a blanket exception, that the minimum standards need to be met. And from what I can tell, they have not been met. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I have a question. I'm not sure who this is directed to, but has the, either the city manager's office, the city council, or the city of Highland Village, have they provided some sort of report as far as this proposal, the compliance and consistency with the current and the comprehensive plan? Has there been any report or anything written down from the city council, city of Highland Village, or the city manager's office?
Well, procedurally, procedurally, there won't be anything going to the city council yet, and there's nothing coming from the city council because procedurally, it goes here first and then to the city council.
Yeah. But they still review all the documents and proposals and everything else that comes in to make sure that it's compliant?
They'll review everything. They'll review exactly what you've received, plus whatever they received between this meeting and the next meeting.
Okay. So there's no report that has been just?
No.
Okay.
What you have is a staff report. You have what's the, the presentation of the applicants, the testimony from the public hearing, and some of the emails and other presentation documents have been provided by the public and others. So that's, that's the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
My understanding is that we're not approving any plans, except we're talking about changing the zoning from SF40 to multifamily. That's really what the conversation is?
Well, with the conversation, you've got a, of course, they're in the packet, and your packet is a draft, draft ordinance. You're basically being asked to make a recommendation regarding that draft ordinance. And that draft ordinance contains, you know, the, the concept plan, the, the draft regulations, everything that has been requested by the applicant and, and prepared, you know, for your consideration. You know, you've got the ability to either, again, the whole, your process is you either recommend, but the city council deny it, recommend the city council approve it, or recommend they approve it with some additional changes to that text of that, of that ordinance. That's, that's, that's the decision you have to make.
I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know who could answer this, if there's fire department representation, but related to the right of way, that 24 feet is, again, if someone can answer that question, is, is that enough to be able, because I see, one, it's pretty narrow, but then on the backside of all these units, how do you access to fight a fire on the backside of either the property where you cannot access, or on the outside of, of both of those structures? How is that?
Is 24-foot standard?
Well, the minimum is 40.
Wait, wait, hang on. Difference.
Fire lane.
Fire lane's 24.
Okay.
So whether, the question is whether or not these are supposed to be public streets or not. They do provide for 24. They do provide for 24-foot fire lanes, which would be common on any commercial property, plus in addition to whatever parking that they'd be required to have on a commercial property.
Yeah. And the real question was just the access behind the structures?
That is something I'd.
Not addressed. Okay, that's the city manager.
Than the other residential structure. It'd be the same as fighting a fire in your backyard.
Yeah. Paul Stevens, city manager. I've been trying to answer a question, but people were beating me to it. It was reviewed by the fire department, and it was stated 24 feet is a fire lane width. So there was no concern there. Mr. Myers is correct. All sorts of structures have challenges and difficulties in fighting a fire, backyards and things like that. So there was no concern with that, how they would do that specifically, that'd be left up to them. But the fire lane and the access to that was adequate in their review.
Probably building code.
That is correct. And I don't want to get into too much detail since, yeah, we're talking about the land use. So many of those things. If this was approved, there's engineering that has to be done. There's drainage studies that have to be done. And then, of course, the building code has to be met. So that would come at a later date. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any further questions?
Just a few more for Mr. Broadway, if you don't mind, sir.
Get your hand up there.
There was a question on drainage. Can you explain drainage on your site?
The drainage has been looked at. Scott took a look at it. And I am able to tie into existing drainage close by. And I think it's drained over to the property across the street. Is that correct, Scott? Yeah, so drainage has.
You're draining from basically west to east, is what you're saying?
It will be draining from.
To a, is, when you say to that area, is that a retainage area or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then, the other thing I wrote down, as far as your, and I know we're not talking about landscape plans here, you did have some communication about the existing trees. Could you repeat that?
You bet. The trees along the west property line will be left in place. There's a 20-foot easement there. And the only thing that I'm planning to do is put in a sidewalk back there. Would the sidewalk require maybe some undercut brush to be removed? Maybe. But the trees, my intention is to not remove not one tree along that property line.
Along the west side. Okay.
Along that sidewalk, since it was brought up more than once, what is the plan for how that will? I know there's a fence involved. There's a conversation about the maintenance of the grounds in that space. Who takes care of that? Is that going to be part of the HOA?
Yes, sir. There'll be HOA. They will be responsible for it.
Yeah.
And behind the fence?
Yes. As part of the property? Yes, it will.
And I think I did see the HOA as part of the.
Yeah.
Part of the zone, part of the request. Okay. Okay, I think that's, yeah, those are two things that I had.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Can I make a couple comments since I'm here?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. So tonight, I think the traffic information that was presented shows that the townhomes would produce less traffic than an office building or retail. And that 407 has the capacity to take on another 10,000 vehicles. That was proven. That information came from the city. That's where I got that. It showed an office building at 15,000 square feet. And we're talking about four acres. That's 8% of four acres. Nobody's going to put in one office building. They're going to want to put in five or four, which is going to quadruple the traffic, which I'm proposing. The housing market is strong. Ryan talked about supply. The next three to five years, they're projecting the same thing. So that should help eliminate the concerns about rental. And since the inception of this project, a main focus of mine has been the privacy of the neighbors. I said it on day one. I'm saying it today. I have reduced the number of townhomes. I'm leaving the 20-foot easement, which could be easily, that water line could be very easily rerouted. I'm leaving the trees on the west property line. The building along the west side of the property have no windows on the second floors. And I'm putting up a cedar fence as an extra site blockage on the backside of the property. So when I say that, I truly, truly mean that I have taken into consideration the privacy of the neighbors. Had I not, I would have designed it different. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. We've got a question real quick. So approving a change of use in this way by going from a, I guess you've used two different terms. Is it freestanding or is it freestanding? Okay. To an overlay. While I think this property potentially needs a zoning change, when, if we were to grant this specific as written and prepared, if we were to grant that, does that overlay in the, because there's a lot of ordinances that need to be changed to make this happen? Do those ordinance changes follow with the change in use from, I guess it's currently residential to multifamily?
Can I make a comment real quick? It's from SF-40 to PD, which is not multifamily.
Okay. Yeah, let's be real clear.
Yeah, PD.
This is, townhomes are single-family. I know commonly, people think because they're so close and often they're tied together in four units or more, often people think they're multifamily. They're not.
Yeah.
They're, in a legal real estate sense, they're a single-family home. They're just built differently in multi-units like that.
Yeah, so misspoke, PD overlay.
Yeah, let me explain. The way this ordinance is written, all of the SF-40 zoning remains in place. So it doesn't change the standards of the SF-40. The overlay regulations only apply to the property to the extent that it's used and developed for townhomes. So otherwise, if it's not built for townhomes, it still has to be used for SF-40 purposes, what's allowed, which basically means it'd be single-family detached homes. So that's, if that answers your question.
That answers my question.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If that's all the questions, then, first of all, just so that everyone understands how we vote, the Planning and Zoning Commission has seven commissioners, but.
And none of us elected, by the way.
Yes. And none of us are elected. We are all appointed.
Volunteer, by the way.
We're crazy enough to volunteer.
Volunteer if you still live here.
Ms. Retschner and Mr. Myers are alternate commissioners. And during, as you very well saw and listened, they can, they talk, they ask questions, they do whatever. The only thing they can't do is vote. So the five commissioners right here are the ones that vote on this. So this chair will entertain a motion.
Can I ask a qualifying question here too? Just because the, sorry.
Absolutely.
The question that Jared asked reversed in my mind what the actual ordinance is that we're, we're not actually changing the zoning.
You're not actually, well.
I understand, but I mean, it's not.
Yes, you're changing the zoning by adding a set of regulations on top of the existing zoning. That's thus the term overlay.
Right. Okay.
So, but it is effectively a zoning amendment.
Right.
Okay.
And it's, we're approving a zoning change, not necessarily for him. I mean, that this is nor not approving his plan is just a zoning change.
It's a zoning change, but it is based on the presentation of what's in front of it.
Excuse me?
Yeah. So.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. What was that?
It is a zoning change, but it's a zoning change based on the presentation that we're, that's got in front of us. Because it does have specific dimensions, specific requirements.
Ordinance changes, overlay.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll ask the question again. Then do we have a motion?
Ms. Chairman, I would, again, I know what we're going from a certain zoning change to an overlay, but based on the information that is put in this overlay, I just don't think that it's, that we can meet the minimum requirements of what we would really need to see in that area. So I would say, as it's written right today, I would make a motion to deny this change.
So there has been a motion made to deny the proposal. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Chairman, just one other question, one other clarification just for the folks here, just so they understand. Your role, the motion is really to recommend the city council to deny.
I'm sorry, yes, it is. We would make a recommendation to the city council.
I understand that.
Because obviously, it's not over tonight.
Right, right. That's correct. But we would make a recommendation to, I'm sorry. I should have ordered that correctly.
Thank you. All those in favor of sending this to the city council to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then, if we have no further. Ms. Amant, you had nothing else?
Just our next regular scheduled meeting date is September 20. I am working on some projects. So I do anticipate we will have a P&amp;Z meeting on that day.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned at 8:45.